Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Invitation by Dr. Bradley and pledge allegiance by Councilman Johnson.
Pray for me.
You. Yeah, please. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come at this hour of the afternoon to say thank you. We come with Thanksgiving in our hearts and on our lips, O God. For this opportunity to serve the people of Jasper County, we say thank you. And, O God, during these times of uncertainties, help us to be encouraged by your love, O God, for us all. And help us, O God, to be better men and women, boys and girls tomorrow than we are today. This is our prayer. We pray. And all God's people say, amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the purpose of this meeting today is the discussion of the budget. Budget workshop. We have the second reading coming up Monday night, right?
Yes, sir.
The second reading is Monday night, so we need to get, have this budget workshop and figure out exactly where we at and where we going. Andy, you and Leah want to go first?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just trying to figure out what format you'd like to pursue here. First of all, we have this budget workshop set. We have not had a chance to discuss it yet, but we also have, if you would like, some time that we could put on the Monday's meeting for a budget workshop before the meeting as well, if you have any questions or anything that are lingering after this workshop. But I think at your last workshop, Ms. Burgess ran through her memo, which gave you a little bit more detail. And I remember, Mr. Chairman, you had some technical difficulties on your machine and unfortunately, I think the last two pages, you weren't able to hear that portion of it. So we'd be happy to run through that. I say we, I mean, Ms. Burgess would be happy to run through that with you again. If you'd like to, or if you think that's redundant, or you want us just to pick up midway through that memo, just let us know.
Well, I'd like to go through it again. I really would. That's this one. Any? Since it's just, there's so few in number. Anybody that's got a question, let's go ahead while we're speaking and stop you at that time. That'd be all right, Tom?
Certainly.
Okay. Frank?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Burgess, then you have one for you. The suggested budget of $30,530,000, which is a part of monthly $674,000 less than last year's budget. There was an increase in property taxes of $1.1 million for last year, which is primarily due to an 8% growth in the property values. And we did not budget for anticipated growth in any new rent for fiscal year 2021. And the mill credit remained the same at $130,000. We could receive notice, car carry, you can still permit it to raise the mill's rate by 4.99%, or seven mills, which would yield an additional $147,660 per mill, or gaining a 23.6%.
Well, I can tell you that's not gonna happen this year.
So the local option sales tax is estimated at $36,000,000, which is $100,000 less than last year. And the lost credit is estimated to be the same at $700,000. We did, the fee and lip revenue is $500,000 greater. And we anticipate that the state and the local governments will remain the same. So we did reduce some of the revenues because of the COVID-19 closures. And those are the license fees, business licenses, planning and permit fees, the parks and recreation fees. And they've been reduced 20%. And we're going to be watching that very closely as we go into the new year to see where that actually ends up. Right now, it's a little, we're just, it's hard to predict. We do have economic development funds included. We have the grant for the Robertville and Gray's Park restrooms of $290,000, the Sherwood Track entrance and asbestos abatement grant match of $5,000. There's an annual payment to the South Carolina Regional Alliance of $140,000.
Excuse me, what page are you on, Ms. Burgess?
I'm on the very first page of the memo.
Okay.
Right, about halfway down, under revenue.
Okay.
And then the, there's a small generator grant match for the airport at $2,500. We do have a cash carry forward this year of $120,000, which is based on the IT sled recommendations for the IT department.
That's because of security, right?
Yes, sir. That's actually some, a new person, a new, and then some other issues, software, yes, sir. As far as employee and personnel costs, total personnel cost for the coming fiscal year is budgeted at $18,686,500. Last year, we budgeted $18,193,470,000. So that's a difference of $493,000. The number of employees remain the same with the following exception. One of those is the addition of a network administrator for the IT department, which was approved this year. That's part of that $120,000 carryover. There's a transition from a part-time to a full-time position for the tax collector's office. And there is the addition of three lieutenants for the Marshco Fire Station in the last quarter of the fiscal year 2021. So those new personnel costs total $144,400. The wages increased $247,280, which is primarily the result of budgeted positions that were filled throughout the year. And so they're increasing, or get a full year impact for the coming fiscal year. So the overtime increased $79,000. And that was budgeted basically to reflect the actual amounts incurred in fiscal year 1920 and was reduced somewhat by the overtime that was incurred for the hurricanes, for the disasters that we had. So this was basically overtime, not related to disaster. We had, there was an increase in the retirement contributions that we anticipated that we were going to have, and the legislature basically postponed that for another year, so we don't have those increases. However, the benefits did increase 3.2%. Again, that's because of filling the budgeted positions in this year. The toward insurance, we received notice that the toward insurance would increase 9%. And the workers' compensation increased 14%. Medical insurance decreased, or 6% or $130,000. And that's, even though we have a very slight increase of .033%, it increased, decreased because of actual, what we're actually experiencing with the medical insurance premiums. Yes, sir?
Our working comp increased 14% overall, right?
Yes, sir.
Did we have some bad experiences?
We, our rating is, we just received a letter, we're ranked 23 out of the counties in the state, so as far as our workers' comp rates go. But we have had some claims. Yes, we have. So we have a little bit higher experience rating than most of the other counties locally. And anyway, so we're trying to bring that up to actual so that we don't get a big premium hit in the middle of the year. So then the...
We have been getting a little refund on the compensation. About every year.
Oh. We didn't get a refund this past year. We got a $40,000 increase in the premium. It'd be nice to have gotten a refund, but so...
Maybe we need to have more safety meetings.
That's a possibility. That's a possibility. So we did have, we did have one, rather large one, last, the year before last, so we haven't had any, I don't think, this year, but not overall.
If I may, I think part of that is also that the budget is based on the employees that are in the budget. And when we have a lot of vacancies, we're not going to be looking at all those employees. And then when they do the audit, that's part of the reason, I think, we're getting a refund on the creatures.
Yeah, they do it on salary too, so they...
And it's also like, it's almost like two years in a row. We have to give them an amount, a budget, a budgeted salary, and then it's almost two years before that is what we get the insurance premium on. So anyway, we're trying to prevent that surprise.
Okay, give us an example from the assessors' office. I note that the recommendation for the 2021 budget is that the part-time positions become a permanent position. Share with us the difference there with that.
So in the assessors', in the assessors' office?
Yes.
They are considered, they're what we call temporary employees. They are run through the payroll, and they are able to receive all of the benefits that any other employee would get.
The temp?
Yes. So the thought is that if we keep them, if we convert them from temp to permanent, then we don't have to, we don't have to retrain people when it comes time to do the reassessment again. We have these people who are already trained. And since we're already having to pay the benefits, there's really no, there's no additional benefit other than saying, thank you, you're, we appreciate your service, call you in two years.
Okay, how much training are we talking about opposed to someone just coming in and you haven't trained?
Well, they have to bring, they have, you have to be brought up to speed on the computer, the software, what it means to be, I don't even know what the assessors, as far as what they do. But, you know, and then you have to find them, all of that, it costs, costs the county money to recruit, test, retrain. They say it's three to six months, I believe. Nicole would probably know better than I. Net salary, takes quite a bit of time to bring them up to speed.
You wouldn't bring someone in that doesn't have basic skills, would you?
Well, we don't have to train them on how to use the computer necessarily, but we might have to train them on the assessors' particular software.
Right.
In that particular instance.
Okay.
So, I mean, we do try to, you know, give tests when we can and those kind of things, yes. So basic skills, yes, but skills specific to the assessors' office, maybe not.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So continue, just, we'll talk about the fire and dispatch contracts. We have the two for the Levy Fire Department in the town of Ridgeland. And those are in alignment with the current agreements, which is, excuse me, $255,000 plus workers' comp compensation for Levy, which totals $268,000, and $205,000 for the town of Ridgeland. The dispatcher salary reimbursement agreements, we have those in here, they've been reduced $15,000 to provide for financial aid to the municipalities to transition to the new emergency records management software. And that, the agreement is that they will pay for that, and the dispatch agreement will, over the next three years, will be reduced until it's at zero, and they're paying only for the, their portion of the software, the CAD and emergency records management software. Then we have a couple of new budget items. We have the Marshco Fire Station, which is, we have the interest, and then of course, we have the construction loan, and those are in there. Then we have the annual lease purchase agreement, which I just referred to, for the motor, for the, with Motorola Spillman, for the computer-assisted dispatch and emergency records management software, which is $282,400. And then there was an amount included in the agency appropriations for the Morris Heritage Center. In the past, they have been provided funds through the ATAX. And it, we added them into the appropriation this year at $15,000, so...
Why are we not funding them again through ATAX money?
Well, I suppose we could, but the ATAX money is for tourist-related, and I wasn't, I wasn't completely sure that that was where, that was an appropriate place for them to be funded, similar to JARM. Maybe it should be, but that's something that I just wanted to bring up.
They do draw a lot of tourists.
So, and that, and that would be, then if that's the case, then they should be put back in the ATAX, so...
I agree.
That's what I think. Should be put back ATAX.
Okay.
What are we talking about there?
They draw a lot of traffic off that.
Which one are we talking about now, Mr. Chairman?
The Marsh.
Right, I agree. Exactly.
Okay.
That was gonna be my question, why was it taken out of ATAX?
Like I said, when I looked at...
And now it's into the general.
Right. When I looked at the tourist, because it has to be a tourist-related, I wasn't completely sure. And if you, if you think that's the appropriate place, I'm more than happy to take it out.
They draw a lot of people off that.
Okay. And then...
But just because, they do have to make applications for these funds, is that correct?
Yes.
And just because they make application for it doesn't necessarily mean that they will be...
They get on the list. Get what?
Awarded, is that correct?
For the ATAX?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And then we have the list of the state mandates on page three, which totals $7,298,000 net of the state aid to local governments, which is anticipated to be $1,030,000. And these state mandates are approximately 24% of the total budgeted expenditures for the county. I won't go through the list, you can see it there. And then the last page is the capital outlay. As I'm, the only current capital outlay in there is the $39,500 that we budget annually for the replacement of waste containers for the transfer stations. And I would add that we had our bid opening today, and it was our first vendor registry Zoom bid opening. So it was interesting. We had two bidders. But the list here for the capital, we have the fleet vehicle lease replacement program for both the county and the sheriff vehicles. Many of those vehicles are 14 years old. This, this particular program includes routine maintenance. And the first year, the program would be, the expenditure would be greater because you would get rid of, you would sell off most of the older vehicles, and then you would have fewer each year replaced. I think it's a five-year, three to five-year cycle. That's anticipated to be about $500,000. Fire and Rescue has put in a request to initiate a capital funding program for the replacement of equipment such as hoses, nozzles, breathing apparatus, bottles, stretchers, and thermal imaging cameras, generators, that's $200,000. The purchase of property and the construction of a communications tower at a site in the south end of the county, in that Levy-Hartyville area, to improve emergency communications and increase the public safety, that's a million five. Yes, sir?
We still don't have the coverage we need down on south end of the county, right? So we've been fighting this thing 12 years. 12 years. And I, and I know we're not gonna find it, we need to find this year. We need to find a program or something that will help us, and let's try to get that done, 'cause we don't know how many lives it might save, or how many people might die without having the coverage that you made down there.
Yes, sir. I think Chief Edwards is, Chief Edwards might have some, I know we've talked about some potential alternatives, and we also have talked about looking at this as we get further into the budget year to see where our revenues actually fall. But there, I know there's some alternatives that we've talked about, but I wanted to make sure that it was put on this list so that you are aware that it's there and we are, we have, you know, we're considering it, so it's still out there for your consideration.
I know one thing, there's some talk about a booster or something they could put on top, it might help it. It's all Motorola, right? Yeah. I mean, it'd be great to have this meeting bound on a sound log. But I just, any other way, you know, that we can do it. But I spent this much money, it should work, you know, it should. And I, I really, this is something that slipped my mind, and we hear about it, even sheriff talked about it two or three years ago. And it went dead again, so I didn't know whether anything, anyway, okay.
So the next item is a temporary terminal at the Ridgeland-Claude Dean Airport to provide a pilot lounge, restrooms, place to wait out of the weather. That would basically be a, like a, like a construction trailer type that people use for construction offices. We would lease it for a period of time until the terminal is built. That's $22,000. There's also a fuel system for the Ridgeland-Claude Dean Airport at $1,500,000. Levy Fire Department makes requests for equipment for $50,000, eight sets of SCBA and masks for $60,000, a new pumper for $450,000, and a fireworks call reporting system for $10,000. The assessor made a request for some new furniture at $20,000. The assessor, auditor, tax collector, and treasurer have a request for an imaging project, which would be $85,000. The Department of Social Services would like some office outfits, as well as the Election Commission have put in there, we don't have any quotes, we don't have any estimates yet, I put in there not to exceed $200,000 for both of those. And then the Department of Juvenile Justice needs some additional outfits, not to exceed $100,000.
A question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Burgess, what process is used to determine how you're going to honor the request of the different departments or the different organizations?
Well, as far as the Department of Social Services, those particular, the last three, so those last three, I, I did meet with each of these individuals, the department, for the heads of these, and requested that they provide a list of what they wanted done. But as far as what actually, what funding is, is provided for these, that would be up to you as the council, particularly since it's capital and it's not a part of the routine operating budget. It's up to you as, to you to determine if these are the items you want to fund this year or have a five-year plan or whatever.
What process do you use to determine the recommendation for funds?
Like, where did I get the $200,000 from? I'm not sure I understand the question.
You have different organizations making requests.
Yes, I do not reach out to them necess, they, I have not reached...
They come and make the requests to you.
They come to me, yes, sir.
Absolutely. So the question is, how do you determine those organizations that you would recommend to council for funding?
I suppose because I went and looked at their circumstances, you know, I went, when they made the request, I came and saw what they were talking about. I went to their offices, I understand their concerns. In some cases, I would say that it's their responsibility to make whatever repairs they're requesting, but in our, in these cases, there are buildings that they're using, so I feel like the county does have some sort of responsibility to maintain, to maintain them and at least put them on here for consideration.
Right.
Whether you decide that or not, that is your decision.
Okay.
But I did want to put this, that these are the kind of requests that we've received, that I've received.
Right.
In the, of the last year.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
Did that answer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and that is basically the memo. Yes, sir?
Before you leave there, I've got two sort of methodology questions. One is going back two pages, just by way of example. With a budget for overtime increase $79,000 to reflect the actual amount in this year, now I understand that that, just, just taking this as an example, that that was over budget, $79,000. So are we talking about having to come up with $158,000? Or are we, we talking about having to come up with money to pay the overage as well as money to... having to come up with money to pay the overage as well as money to maintain that level? Or where does the overage come from?
Well, I felt like it was probably under budgeted last year, and because we're having, I did make adjustments for disaster type, but I just looked at, I felt like if we continue budgeting for something that we're not meeting that budget, then we need to maybe look at how we're budgeting and what we should be budgeting there.
Sure, I wasn't trying to say it was good or bad, I was just, if we, if we're over 80 for this year, do we have to come up with that 80 plus?
It's not really over 80, that is basically, it's basically, no, we don't. The answer's no.
And-
That was for positions that wasn't filled?
It is part of that. Sometimes when positions aren't filled, overtime increases, so, and I know you want to set a goal with your budget as well, so that's, you know, I could go back and take a second look at that if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to do that.
Under your proposed budget, these capital expenditures would, let me back up and start over. As I understand, your proposed budget, it pretty well absorbs the projected revenue for this year.
Yes, sir.
And these capital expenditures would either, there's only three ways to pay for them. We either got to raise millage, we've got to borrow the money, or we've got to invade the emergency fund, or I always forget the property.
The fund balance.
The fund balance, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, just want to make sure I was interpreting the accounting records right. These capital, hold on, what are we talking about? They're brought to you by the different departments, are just things that we have known that we needed and been putting them off. How do we determine that?
Some of both, I mean, some of these things, as you mentioned, the new towers, something we've been talking about for years, and again, they're all currently unfunded in your budget. But it does give you some time to take a look at those 13, 14 items, and try to come up with a policy directive about what your priorities are. I mean, you know, our priorities, when we try to do something, are health, safety issues probably first. I want to Johnson here, this legal requirement is probably second, and then everything else is sort of a luxury. I'm not saying all these items aren't needed, but I think this budget year gives a good opportunity, even if you were to budget for some of these items, I don't think you'd want to pull the trigger on spending any money until we got through half the year and you saw where we were revenue-wise. So, I think it gives you a good opportunity to take that right there and create a little capital improvement plan, and over a multi-year period, and see if we can find a way to chip away at these and try to complete some of them for you.
I know, I think it's very important that tower, I know it's a million five, whatever, but there's no other way that we can figure out how to do that.
There are other ways the chief is currently working on, and so, two things, I don't know that if we had a million five, we'd recommend you spend that on that project anyway. He may have some other creative ways you could spend less on that, and that's going to sort of collide with your ability to pay anything, and I think we'll have a plan for you, in relatively short order about that.
In other words, that's an alternative plan.
Yes, sir, you remember, there was some talk about having a booster or something like that, I think all that's been evaluated, and the real answer is that you need a height of a new tower, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And so, there really isn't any cheaper way to do it. Question is, how do you get the revenue to do it, and we have some ideas that we're exploring to try to help get you some revenue.
Were put into the department requests as a line item, but they were truly capital, and so we pulled them out of that because of the concern we have for, because of the fact that we had to reduce revenue with the COVID-19 closures. So, we tried to be conservative and pull out anything that we felt would be capital, and so, some of these might, would be line items that might, you might see in their request, but they were pulled out and put on this list because they were purely capital.
I do have one other question about capital outlay. Is there any form, any way that we can service fuel to the airplanes at Claudine Airport without building a whole fuel system upon?
Yes, sir, we're also evaluating other ways we may be able to do it. Remember, you have fuel for sale out there now, it's just not a county-owned operation, and you're not currently able to apply jet fuel, at least one person requests that. But we're also trying to find a way to enter into that that is not so capital-intensive for you as well.
Am I correct that the plan is to have competitive fuel pricing and actually hopefully make money off of it eventually? Right.
Yes.
Yes.
The airport is one of the most important factors we got right now, because we can't reach the port.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, yeah, you're coming in loud and clear.
No, I'm coming in. I told him, I thought you were stepping on my feet.
Okay. You got any other comments at this time?
No, just I followed through as much as I could, and I would just like to say, I don't know what else we can really do to the budget, with the crisis and everything that we are going through and what we have been through. And I think we need to go ahead on, we get back to the next Zoom meeting or whatever, and we need to have the public hearing, and we need to put this budget to rest because we can always come back due to the circumstances and adjust this budget. But I see a few things in there I'm not too pleased with, but at this time, I'm not going to beat them across their head, because everybody is tired, everybody's been working strenuously, employees have, and as long as we are not out of the fence and we are still in the rim, I think we just need to go ahead on and quit beating ourselves up too with it. I was seeing numbers until, I don't know, I think I'm still seeing numbers. That's all I'm saying. Thank them for a job well done.
Well, I've been through it myself, so.
I know, I know you have, because you don't sleep.
No sense in sleeping. Anyway, no sense in sleeping. That's right. Anyway, that's what we're here for.
Okay.
Guess we got some questions?
That's right.
Yep. We do know, we do know about schools. Schools will have their budget to us by when, and we give them a time that they have to have it.
Mr. Sheriff, I would defer to that, but she has information to give you about the school district.
Well, we can get the taxes, notice of that.
Yes. So, at the budget workshop, I understood Dr. Anderson to say that they were going to request the same revenue that was in their current budget. After further discussion with the school district, their request is, was actually to keep the millage rate the same, and to use the, and to calculate their revenue based on the increase in the assessed value, of the increase in the value of a mill, value of a mill. So, the value of their mill is 101,015 dollars. So, using that calculation and keeping the millage rate at 166, their revenue would be 16,996,126, which is 662,000, I'm sorry, would be 16,768,500, which would be 435,000 over their current revenue amount. So, I have made that adjustment in the ordinance. At this point, unless I am again mistaken as far as what the council wanted to do, but I did tell them that we needed their actual budget no later than August, early September, so we could have it ready for the tax bill. And then their debt appropriation would also change. Last year, it was, it was 3,443,821 dollars. This year, with the, keeping the millage rate at 25, using the new value of a mill, it would be 3,663,400, or 219,579 dollars more.
What you're saying, if we leave the mill the same, leave the amount of mills the same, why would it change any?
It was, it's going to change, it's going to change because the value of the mill increased because the appraised-
I thought you said they wanted to leave the mill the same, or they want to leave the millage the same?
They want to leave the millage rate the same, at 166, and 25 for the debt.
Debt service, yeah.
But I had, I had thought they were saying just leave the revenue the same as last year, the 16,333, so I have made that change in the ordinance, which you'll see next Monday.
You said they want to leave the millage the same.
The millage rate the same.
The millage rate the same, and the amount of mills the same. That's not what you're saying.
No, the millage rate the same, at 166, but apply it to the increase in the value of a mill. Which is something that I calculate every year for the budget. That's how we determine what the revenue for the county will be.
That's what happens anyway.
So.
Okay. But the date-
Yes, 434.
The date that we gave them to have it to us, whether we could approve it or not approve it, are we going to have to have three readings on it, and after they bring it to us?
No, sir, I think Ms. Burgess already has the information out of the school district, so she knows what their request is. No, sir, it's just a- It's the regular reading. The only thing that will happen is the dollars that it yields will go up, but the millage rate will stay the same. So, you have the information prior to your second reading, you're fine.
Oh, prior to that reading?
Right. So, you should be fine going forward. If you all have an interest in looking at the school district budget, that's another story. We can ask for a copy of that budget. But they have provided to you what their request is as far as you set in the military.
Will you give them a copy? Will you give a copy of the audit from them also?
I have a copy of their audit, if you'd like to take a look at it, I can give it to you. They did not, because they're waiting on the state, on whatever the state funds may be, and I don't know, I can ask.
They said they had 1.4 million, and there's no money coming from the state.
Did they say that, or did not? I don't remember that.
They had 1.4 million coming from the state, they didn't get it. Now, I don't think they're going to get the amount, but they did.
That's true.
That is always undetermined. But anyway.
But I have a few questions, Sheriff, Mr. Sheriff. Ms. Burgess, if we could go to the capital and general operations budget, you have that sheet, page two?
Let me wait, I'm sorry. The ordinance, oh shit. Okay.
The first paragraph that says, "Management of individual accounts for the functions of elected officials shall be the responsibility of the elected official." My question is, how are misappropriation of funds handled?
Does that go to you or Mr. Ford?
How would misappropriation of funds be handled?
As regards to the elected official's-
Based on your paragraph here, that management of individual accounts for the functions of elected officials shall be the responsibility of that elected official. My question is, how are misappropriations of funds handled?
You set, you set the millage rate, and you set the budget for each of those elected officials' offices.
Okay.
We monitor the expenditures of the elected officials and provide that information to you typically on like a quarterly basis, and try to give you a heads-up if we have an elected official that may be expending a particular line item faster than we think is safe, right, according to the fiscal year, or if in fact they do run over. But as far as their authority, they have the authority to spend their budget as-
As they see fit.
Yes, sir.
Well, let's go to section five, page, page three. The expenditures not to exceed appropriations. And it reads, expenditures shall not exceed appropriations without the consent of county council. My question is, what penalty, if any, for any, anyone that exceeds the appropriation?
Well, that'd be a county council decision, and typically, Dr. Brentley, how that's handled is in the subsequent year. In other words, if you had a department that overspent its budget, that was an elected official, you would probably consider that in the next budget session and remind them of that, and perhaps you could change their budget amount that was allocated to, to show them that you don't like that type of behavior.
But we don't have budgetary workshops during the year, do we not?
Yes, sir, if we have an amount where they were expended over their total of budget, it typically requires a budget amendment, so that would come back to you for an ordinance, not only to explain it, but you would have to pass an ordinance in order to rectify that money. We can't spend money we don't have. And so, you would do a budget amendment, and then, again, you would have that to consider in your, in your next year's budget.
But if they have exceeded their appropriations and they have no, no funds left to operate, then what?
They can only, they can only operate on the money that you authorize.
If we want misappropriation, they promised us, what we got to do, we got to go back to the budget.
In the middle of the year?
One of the things that I think he's asking a question for, the sheriff, is 11% above his budget.
Current. Correct.
11% above, which is-
But he has not exceeded the total appropriation that he has been allocated, is that correct? He has just gone beyond this point in the year where he should have spent, is that correct? Is that what we're saying?
That's all we can do is provide those warnings. You won't know- You won't know until the end of June of where he has landed.
See.
Does that make sense?
And, and beyond that point, then what? If he's gone beyond the appropriations at that point, when we discover it, then what?
Well, that's.
What's the penalty?
Well, that's your choice. You can penalize him by taking funds away the, the next year. Whatever you need to do, but what it would ultimately do is that money would be absorbed out of our fund balance. We'd have to cover that.
Overtake. That overtake. That doesn't sound like anything very appropriate to me. Okay.
The very good news is we don't have a lot of that to deal with as a problem. And certainly have it.
Maybe a few dollars, but not.
Okay, let's go to number nine, please, on page four. The county council request shall be, that this accounting shall be available for examination or inspection by the citizens of Jasper County. Does that mean that every department budget is subject to inspections by the citizens of the county? Or examination?
Yes, sir.
Of the citizens of the county?
Yes, sir.
So they just simply make a request for the, for the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We recognize that's not our money.
Okay.
Okay? It's the county's money. It's everyone's taxpayer's money. And we're, we're happy to provide anything upon request.
Okay.
Do we have this working budget online now?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, that's all for that one.
Then we put it on in case people have some questions.
I was hoping to have revisions to this workshop and then put it on there for the public, have a, for the board meeting. Have a revised budget prior to the public hearing on the first.
Yeah, I mean, I hope we get it on there soon enough.
It has to be soon.
Mr. Chairman, we, we have the budget document on there, not the budget detail. And the problems we've had in the past with putting the budget detail on there is that there have been a lot of changes in it and people can't keep up with which version, right? And so when we feel like you are close in the version, that's what we feel is appropriate to put that up. However, we didn't want to request what we provided to them, but my experience has been confusing when people get it, because you may make a change in it the next week. You have several different documents floating around.
Okay. To the budget worksheet, report page seventy-two, please. Item two thousand.
Yes, sir.
If I'm correct, I believe last year you told us that that record, that represented two positions, is that correct?
It still does.
It, it still does?
Yes, sir.
Now, what happened to the position last year, because that position was never filled, is that correct?
That position, correct. That position was just beginning February.
Okay.
And I do have a correction on this, as we happened to mention, on page seventy-two.
Right.
That line item for medical insurance should actually be the amount of the department request. That was a flat-fingered high vote.
Right, okay.
That eighteen hundred dollars should actually be eleven thousand nine hundred.
Okay. Okay. Very, very good. Go on, Mr. Chairman.
I, I got. And I know some of mine of us, is money. Tax payments went from sixteen thousand to sixty-three thousand and oh, six two hundred departmental.
So we have to pay, we pay property taxes for our rental building that, the building that we lease at Cypress Ridge. And we also have to pay property taxes on equipment that we lease. So rather than including that as a part of the lease payment, we took it as property taxes as a separate line item to show the difference between what we had agreed to for the lease payment and what the property taxes are. And in fact, we're just paying ourselves back, really. But we have to pay it because we're billed through the, the Department of Revenue. Because those reports are filed with the Department of Revenue, they, they submit the bills and then the county pays it essentially back to itself.
Okay, another question. Still on the budget worksheet report, page sixty-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you there?
Yes, sir.
Agency appropriations. The question is, what are the organizations or agencies that we are state mandated to support?
On this list?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to cheat and go back to my memo. So the solicitor, the first one there, the one ninety-five. The legislative delegation.
Okay.
Fifty-one six, I don't think the H is on there. The public defender, let me make sure I have that, yes, the public defender. Um. The. We are, we, the the M I, the M I A P assessment at fifty-six four hundred.
Okay.
And I believe that is it on this, on these particular lines.
Okay, so if that's the case, then how do we determine the support of?
What do we do with these?
Yes, ma'am.
Well.
Unfortunately, Dr. Brantley, that's a policy decision of the county council. Staff really does not get involved in that. We, we submit all the requests from these nonprofit agencies to you and we allow the county council to deliberate those and decide which ones they want.
Okay, so when was this submitted to council for consideration?
This particular budget, I think all of them are the same, except for the one that you have eliminated already this evening.
Okay.
And all of the requests have been provided to you.
They were in your package.
Yes, but it came along with the budget.
Correct.
With the recommended budget.
Correct.
So the question is, when were they decided? Because they are part of the, the budget that has been submitted to us.
We just funded exactly what you funded last year, the same amount. We funded exactly what you funded at the last year at the same amount.
Okay, but do we just automatically just regurgitate what we've done in the previous year?
That's up to you, we've given you what you did last year, same amount of money and all the new requests. So if you want to entertain new requests or additions or deletions, you're certainly welcome to do that.
See.
Dr. Brantley, they usually come before us, each one of them and, and make the request. So that helps us.
Right, absolutely. But I know because of the situation.
Jasper Animal Rescue Mission and Agency Appropriations.
Yes, sir.
And then you send a, don't you send a, a, a budget request to?
What?
Don't the animal rescue and all of them send a budget request?
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like everybody else, yeah, just like every other department. I just want to find that it's not in a department by itself.
Which one, the animal?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well, they're not a department.
Have they not been in a department before, Andy?
No, sir, it's always been an appropriation. It may have been, you know, fifteen years ago when the county did that operation, but since it was contracted with JAR, it's always been under appropriation.
Okay.
You're talking about Andy?
We're talking about the animal rescue. Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, we take them down. I don't want none.
You don't want any? You'd go over there and drop some of them, it wouldn't be so bad.
I know, but I don't want none, that's why I'm gonna try and give them the money.